Alrighty. Let us begin. So I will call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:01. And please join me in the pledge flags there. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, the republic for which stands the Constitution, with its full liberty and justice for all.
Any public input? Will be correspondents since I saw you a couple hours ago. Okay, so we'll move along. Approval of meeting minutes, I will make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of September 27, 2020. Roy seconds, does anybody have any questions, changes, comments on the minutes that you were saying? Everybody's good because I'm sorry. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain. I don't know if anybody else has to. Yeah, I think the other person would be more than, and he's not here.
Nobody else?
Yeah, okay. So moving along into old business, municipal center renovation, the GP room lobby, we have Mark, I don't know if there's anything you have that's specific other than the invoice or application for payment from BMP? Oh, you're muted.
I apologize for that, Mark, it's right for Colliers. Yeah, the invoice is all I got, and we kind of covered it last, at the last meeting, we didn't have the signed copy and it wasn't distributed prior to the meeting, so it got pushed to this week's meeting, so.
And I have the original that Jim brought over last week, so we should be good with that, and then I'm assuming after this, there'll be one more Colliers invoice, and that should be everything?
Yeah, I'll need to check with Scott, I thought we provided the final billing, so
Okay.
I will check with Scott on that.
Okay. Okay, so before we get into invoices, anybody have any questions for Mark? Et cetera, we're good to go? So I will make a motion that we approve application for payment number, what number?
Five.
Five from BMP, and this is the retainage amount, and the amount of $8,282.05.
I'll second.
John mentee seconds, and the second page has all information needed. Any comments?
Just one question, once, you said we have one more invoice coming after this?
Possibly a Colliers invoice, but Mark's gonna check on that. This is final BMP, there's zero to finish on this.
Okay.
This is just the retainage amount.
After the Collier, when that should close that project out?
Yes, yep. Yes, and then I can do a final updated budget, and hopefully take that to the board's like, and say, can we now put that towards?
Nothing.
The locker rooms. Okay, any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done, good. Thank you. Anything else for Mark before he heads off? Thank you, Mark, for all your help.
Thank you.
See you on the next project, because we want to get going on that soon.
Definitely, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So, as I said, I just thought there'd be a final Colliers invoice, but we'll check on that, we'll be able to tell by the next meeting whether we have that or not, then I can put together a final budget, check with Brad, make sure, I think we're still at least $50,000 good to go, that we haven't spent, so that's a good thing. So for the locker rooms, I did hear from Janice in Economic Development that we did not get the STEEP grant, so, and that was something that came up, like, she heard about it, put something together very quickly with help from Rachel, me, and a few other people. And what she found, and this is a good thing for us to know for future grants, that all of the towns that were awarded grants already had in place matching funds, or some funds from the town to put towards the project. So they were given, they were bumped up and given grant awards, we didn't have that in place. When I first heard about the grant from Janice, I happened to be here at the Municipal Center and ran into her in the hallway, and I think if we have known a little bit more, had more time, we might have put something different together, maybe gotten some input from Board of Select and Board of Finance on some funding. So that's a good thing to know, if that's how those grants work, we'll know in the future. The next step with the locker room renovations is we're gonna have to meet with Peter Eckert, but first we need to meet with Rachel, for Park and Rack, to get input on how much of that area, part of the STEEP grant, which we were only looking at a small area of the locker room rather than the whole thing. I think we need to look at the whole thing, but if there are other grant opportunities and we can do it in phases or do it in pieces, that would be great. We may not have that type of grant or a STEEP grant opportunity again until next year, I don't know, I assume. But we need to have all of, everything ready to go, we need to have plans in place, et cetera. Even if we did break it into phases, two, three phases, we want to be ready to go with that. So I have to be in touch with Rachel about having, I don't think we need to have her come to a meeting, I think it's more like it's a couple of us get together with her, walk through the locker rooms, are they still thinking of doing all the same things? Are they doing something, different things that they thought, just like when we started to put the plans together for the lobby, and they came up with the idea of a family bathroom, which also became one handicap bathroom, so now they might have some other ideas since the last time we visited that, so, like, I don't know, you said, Roy, you might want to get, or do you put something together, and I don't know if anybody else would?
The only thing I could, my opinion on that is, I think it'd be smart to ask for everything, and then you can always go back.
Oh, definitely.
If you only ask for a little bit.
No, we want to have the whole thing planned out, but if, let's say, a grant is available and we can do a section, or we just say we want to do the whole thing, but here's the money the town can put in, definitely have all the plans ready to go, everything ready to go for whatever areas they want to work on, so, yeah, definitely.
So is there funding left over from?
The lobby, yes.
When we just closed out?
Yep.
How much is that?
About $50,000 maybe. That could hopefully go towards updating the plans, I know that we had looked at, Peter Eckert had given us, we actually have $20,000, so I'll just kind of sit in there, go start with the plans, but it's not just Architects Guild, it's also structural and an MEP, structural may not be as much as, we don't have to go jackhammering up the floor, because we don't need as many toilets as we did originally, so doing all the, we need the sprinklers and like, the plumbing, all that has to do with, we have to start looking into that, how much is that gonna cost? We did get the cost from somebody maybe three years ago, so I'm sure it's changed, we'll see, before we go asking for money, again, from Board of Select and Board of Finance, we need to know how much it's going to be.
So you could, you could, if Peter Eckert doesn't do it, we hire all the time, cost estimator, it just takes the drawings.
Right, yes, well, we gotta get drawings first, and then put it, yeah, but I'm saying a cost to update the plans first, but then do a cost estimator like you said.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yes, yes, because then we would have to see, again, would the town want to jump into the whole thing at once, or do it, it's possible to even do it in phases, I don't know, I have to really look at it. Okay. Anything else on that, any questions? It will keep you posted. The high school H-back upgrade, so we had a meeting, a special meeting on Friday, that lots of you were at, and I was on my computer, it was really hard to hear, so, but I believe lots of questions were answered for people, and I see Roy has plans here, I think he might have reviewed them, and so our next step, we want to keep, so Dr. Carver did send out an email earlier today with link to the shared drive, because they cleaned that up, got rid of some stuff that's not pertinent anymore, because there's updated plans, et cetera, so that's available, and you're working on, those are the plans you're gonna use for the grant, and all the information you're gonna use to submit the grant application, correct?
Yes, and it's what we're gonna use to get the cost estimates, so we have existing cost estimates in the, in the shared drive, so you'll see that, but if we want to make any applications to design or stuff, obviously you have to make those adjustments, but I shared on Friday, for those that weren't there, that will definitely be adjusted to include the owner's rep, because that is not there, and we'll call out the commissioning, so that's a separate line.
So they see that.
Yes, and STV did give us a working budget for what we should include for the commissioning portion of it, and not the provision portion of it, in the, I think I shared on Friday that I had received from Peter.
Oh, Rick.
The guy from.
Yes, Rick.
Yes.
Rich, yeah.
Thank you. And I had sent him when we were originally doing the work, to get an estimate on commissioning a while ago, so we're trying to compile all the information, and what we need to do now is just to readjust the budget for this, for the submission, if that makes sense?
It does, and so, who's doing that?
So what will happen is, first, Jen will have to talk with Kolar Ronan, because obviously we'll have to make an adjustment to the overall scope of the project to include the $83,000 if it was for the owner's rep, or the budget, and not for owner's reps, we'll have to look at the overall scope of the design team, how we can readjust the budget for that, and then, and then STV, we'll work with them again, to make those adjustments in the actual budget, that's our plan, yes.
So we just want to make sure that you're okay with us moving forward with that. So my question is, though, since you're, you're having to make some adjustments within that amount that was approved by their referendum, are there pieces that you have to take out of what's actually going to happen?
Right, we have, we plan for some contingency, but I don't want to take too much out of contingency, so I think it makes most sense to just get a recommendation on it, you know, on what aspect we could pull back on, and then, I think there was about, I know there was a 10%, contingency line, there was like 2.5% for escalation, we probably put it up as right in the folder, but, so we just want to talk them a little bit, and I, because I can't hear my computer connected. So I can, Kathy, you're not connected?
I'm not connected.
So she doesn't, you could, so you'd have to sign into the Zoom and just mute yourself and you could put it.
I, I do it, so, so if you look at the projected budget, that's why I can go to Kathy's, I'm talking to myself through Kathy's email, it's a budget. It's hard to handle, because you can't read anything, mostly.
What do you think this is for?
Do you, like, when you go to a restaurant, you gotta turn your flashlight on?
Because I can't wear these walking around, or I'll trip and fall, I have to just use them for.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I have one that STV prepared, 11/29/2022.
That's it, my friend.
No, that's a newer one.
That's the older one, there's no.
There's one after that?
Let me just, you can. Kathy, do you have the ability to share the screen?
I need a Google, it's right now.
So you should share your screen.
There we go, okay, so just to orientate you, those are the most recent documents, so any of the previous documents that we had regarding any aspect of the project, let me just minimize the, we put in the archived documents, so they're there, whoever wanted to look at them.
Right.
All of the design materials are here.
Okay.
Everything that we're gonna submit as part of the grant application is in this folder, and the cost estimates are in the folder. Here they are, so if you look, this is the overall, and then underneath it is each of the categories has a breakout of the different costs that STV put together with Kolar Ronan, it's a lot of the right there, so if you look, what we were talking about is right now, there's a 10% plural contingency, there was a 2.5% escalation, and did we do, did we pay for bonding units with the Rockwell &amp; Johnsons?
Yeah.
We did, okay.
They didn't pay for for that, but we did as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it usually has to be part of the project.
And maybe you can tell us, I'm not sure what, like, general conditions, or Jen can tell us what that is, but it's kind of what contingency.
We know something is gonna come up.
Yeah, so, this is the breakup that STV put together, so the question really to Craig is, within that, are we comfortable, you know, carving out part of the $83,000 for a separate line?
Right.
Or do we have to scale back on a portion of the project to make more?
Correct, it sounds like it's a little bit of a mix and match.
I think it's a process.
Process. Because one of the, I mean, that's, that's actually one of my concerns that I had even last Friday, this is really not gonna go out for what, a year and a half? Year, year and a half? I even question those numbers there.
Absolutely.
On contingencies, seeing where the market is now.
2.5 escalation.
Well, and that's the question we have to have.
That's just it.
Right, so the question really is.
And I don't mind cutting some of it back, but it, it'd be nice to know the whole scope, what can be cut back? Yeah, without just all of a sudden arbitrarily, just.
100%, and what we would do is we would work with STV and Kolar Ronan, come back to the committee, because again, I know I was saying, it is a lot of work to apply for the grant, but we know we have to come back and say, here's where we are now, given what the new information is regarding everything you just mentioned, so we know that has to happen, I just want to make sure we're okay to start having those conversations.
But along that same line, I know there was some concerns from John, still some of the equipment, I don't like to bring it back up, but some of these items, I still think there's some room for some discussion with Kolar Ronan, which is really no different than kind of what we're doing, mixing and matching, if the project's not ready to be bid, per se, I know we're pricing it, everything is getting.
We have the bid documents, we're ready to go, we have all the technical specs of the bid documents, I need to write the cover page with the firm team, with Brett's.
I totally understand that, but it still sounds like there's a lot of mixing and matching going on, because we're gonna be mixing and matching when we put these new estimates together, you know, so I think something's gonna have to probably get cut based upon, you know, and maybe it's an add, add option at the end, or wherever it might be, so that we'll keep it as a separate category, to see where we come out to price wise.
Right, I don't disagree.
So I'm trying to build as much flexibility as possible.
Right.
I'm not trying to, you know, make it more difficult, I just don't want to.
I think, so I think what I hear you saying is that, and again, I think it goes back to the question of, we have to have that initial conversation with, with Kolar Ronan, because you're right, what has the equipment price have changed, you know, like, what's happened as a result of that, we know, we're doing, we know, we're doing other projects, we know what the, what the costs are.
So most manufacturers right now are, have raised their cost twice in one year, which, that's unheard of.
Yeah.
But that's what you're experiencing, we're going through a similar project right now, and our escalation is 7.2.
Yeah, I also think that it will be interesting to see, because I don't think the state, I like, I think to add to what you're saying, so I'm agreeing with you, but, and I said this to DAS in our meeting the other night, or Friday morning, you're gonna have 100 school districts across the state of Connecticut requesting equipment, trying to do projects, and even take aside the escalation and the cost of it, the ability to actually get it done by 2025, which is when they want it done, is not gonna happen, this is not gonna happen, so we have to have those conversations.
Yeah.
With Kolar Ronan, we have to work with STV, and if we have to make adjustments, we have to make adjustments, I will tell you, the worst areas in that list is the alternate one, that is where the highest temperatures are, so the math and English classrooms are the area of priority for us, in terms of like, it's where it's 95 degrees on an affret, without humidity, and no ventilation.
So, let me ask you, so, this is good information, so you have a priority area?
Yeah.
And you probably have a secondary, and then?
Right, that would be ultimate three.
Okay.
Which is the, the world language classroom, which extends on the third floor around the corner, so that area would be the second priority, I mean, we know what the referendum is, we can't go over to 4,100,000.
There you go.
We can't, it's already passed, we can't do that.
Right.
So we're, but, you know.
But it sounds like the scope of the project can move around a little.
It can.
So it sounds, it sounds like we should be okay.
I think so, and then what we might do, just to throw another idea out there, we might do ultimate one, but then decide another area that's not air conditioning research yet.
Correct.
And that's a much smaller modification, so maybe we can do the first column, and another aspect of the school that maybe wasn't on the initial list, but, but still, still requires both the air conditioning and ventilation for this, so I think there is some flexibility, I guess I'm agreeing with you.
The only, the only concern I have is that, just say, if with the one alternative that you really want to get done, maybe our pricing is starting to get close, or possibly over, I'd like to have Kolar Ronan at least keep some of these items as add alternatives or whatever it might be, so we get pricing in, so that everything is there, we know we can do the project, but a couple of them that, that we might be able to throw out.
Yeah, and we know we're gonna have to do, because we know that it.
So that would happen when it goes out to bid.
But I don't want to lose them, though, I mean, they have to be in the project, so I want priced in.
When does this, when do you actually put this out to bid?
So we wouldn't put it out to bid till actually the grant is accepted?
Right.
Well, we know it's a long lead time, we're discussing that, so it's a long lead time to bring in the equipment.
So that the idea, we could put it out to bid even before we get the grant application, or the, the project approved, but it would have to, bid would have to be contingent upon,
The grant being approved, yeah.
The actually being approved, which would create a better timeline for it.
Yeah.
And we did that with, you know, what is that, it's like, number one, AHX1, we actually bought the unit first, and now we're going out to bid for the installation of the unit, because it's in, it sounds like, it took a long time to get it in.
I'm gonna make a suggestion to you, and I'm gonna follow it up with, I'm gonna be willing to share it with you, so. Yeah, do you believe that? Don't be so shocked, I know you think I'm against you, but I'm not, no, 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 I see it.
What is it?
Take a deep breath. So what we're finding is, every manufacturer has a different lead time.
Yeah.
In the middle of this, what they're not sharing a lot of is, we're in the process of switching over to three different refrigerants, its nickname is a butane refrigerant, because it is partially flammable, so all these factories are retooling for the new refrigerant.
Okay.
I built a spreadsheet, and I built a spreadsheet of all the manufacturers.
Yeah.
You put it on the front end of your project, and that would require Kolar Ronan to do this, is goes out to each manufacturer on what equipment that you need, who has the best lead time, so that could be York, it could be Carrier, it could be Dakin, you know, it could be Aon, you know, I'm gonna strongly suggest for you, there's nothing in it for me, but what that gives you, it gives you a menu to look at and say, okay, this is the cost of this unit, and I can get it in 42 weeks?
Yeah.
Some equipment right now is running 55, 58 weeks, some of it's running 30, but it changes every month.
Yeah, I, yeah, John is absolutely right, the lead times are absolutely incredible right now, that's great insider information.
And when 100 districts are trying to get all the same equipment, it's gonna be, it's gonna be weight works.
So that, that what you do is.
Dr. Carver, did you not say that last week, correct, if I'm wrong, that you're not gonna hear about the grant till the end of next, oh, man?
No, I'm sorry, they said March of 2024.
So is that the only point needs to be committed by 2025, or spent by 2025?
So they.
Because that's impossible.
No, I know, I literally told them that, I thought that they said spent by December of 2025, you have the power.
Okay, December is 2025, okay.
But that's only two summers.
Yeah.
And, and just the lead time for the equipment, and I can't imagine what it's gonna be what everybody's requesting, so all the same now.
So, John, are you finding that the lead time is changing with different manufacturers?
Absolutely.
Like, two months later, this one's out of there, and then?
Absolutely, because what happens is, five people go to them, they order equipment, then it goes from 33 weeks to 46 weeks.
So then now another pair, one is better, okay.
So we built a spreadsheet, and I actually did it because we have so much money committed, that if we don't have it installed, invoiced, and 100%,
There's no way.
We lose the money, and then we have to fund it by ourselves.
We need to finance it in spring of 2026.
So, it brings out the option.
So, so what I'm hearing is, you're okay with us, and maybe coming up some alternates, but working with both STV and Kolar Ronan to see what some options are?
I think that's the next step.
In a more realistic escalation and.
And I'll just put some of the numbers, if you go to the right about middle way up, original cost estimate was in that $3 million range for this work, and then we added over $1 million to it in terms of escalation.
Right, right.
But that, but to be fair, that was done in November 2025, that's when I think you guys did it.
Yeah.
So it's been a while.
Almost, almost a year ago, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, so we definitely, definitely need to relook at it, and we know that.
So I think you do need to do that, and come with what.
So I mean, I could, you know, easily put my head together with our estimating team, this will probably still be fairly fresh in our memories, we could very quickly just say, hey, it's a year out from this numbers, and pop it out, yeah.
And your team also did for us, separate from this, the estimations for some of the other projects, so if we decide to swap in standard for the.
Yeah, I have base bid, ultimate one, they're all four here, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so, so, alright, so that sounds like we're on agreement.
I think we need to do that, and then bring that to the next meeting, so that we see from Kolar Ronan and from STV some numbers, and switching out, switching out, not meaning different equipment, but if for the budget that we're working with, we have to do, like instead of Jim, instead of, I mean, that's not gonna really be kind of written in stone, so to speak, until it goes out to bid, and we're not gonna put it out to bid, or maybe we will a little bit before, but until we start seeing.
If you have, I mean, what concerns me, if you put it out to bid with contingent upon.
You're not gonna get the bids.
They're just gonna say, why am I wasting my time? Am I right, I mean, I don't know, is that? No, because that's where you rely on somebody doing a cost estimate, there's companies, we deal with a half a dozen of them, that we take the plans, they take the plans, and they break it down just like that, and they give you a cost.
Yeah, we have a, we have a completely separate cost estimate department.
We have to use independence, we can't have, we qualify for that, so if we ask you to design a project, we can't really have.
We're not, so, yeah, so, yeah, we're, we're not.
We use independent.
And they did it for a school loop, everything that has to happen at that high school event, so they, they did do it for us, so it's just a little bit of interpretation. So it's just a little bit of our vision.
I, I wanna make a couple of suggestions because I reviewed the prints first and Roy came by and he picked up the prints and he reviewed them. I, I think the number one thing for, for us, for you mainly is, there has to be a, a. Take that list of equipment and somehow break it up on your priority. Unless I missed it, I didn't see it. You know, like this is, uh, you know, like math is priority one and that could be just. Highlighted on those color drawings.
Yeah, we have that, that's, we have that.
Okay, put it up then, cause I didn't see it.
I, I agree, that's kinda what I'm asking about now, so that we know which, which ones we, we wanna take out.
Right, and then.
If, if we have to.
Right, and then the most important one, because you're on a timeframe. I'm gonna be straight up with you, I, I didn't like the answer of Colorado on the VRF. He said the VRF, he, I said, what else did you compare it to for Colorado's classrooms? And he said a VAV system, that is the most unpractical combination that you could do. You wouldn't, you would never do a retrofit on a VAV. We have twenty-two schools and we haven't done a single retrofit to VAV, cause it's the biggest amount of equipment to put above the ceiling. I, I would much rather see, and just speaking for myself, is the concept of running free onlines to every classroom. Is running chill water lines to every classroom. And that, that was very similar to what we did at Rockwell. So we couldn't fit a VAV system in Rockwell and Josh and I went there, I don't know, Roy, you were with us too, right? Were you with us? Yeah, we measured above the ceiling and there wasn't room to do a VAV system like we did at the police station. But we compromised and we did a DOAS system and ran chill water lines to air handlers that are in the classrooms above the ceiling. At Rockwell? At.
Rockwell, yes.
That's, that's a, that's a much better system. I was disappointed that I didn't hear that. And I'm gonna say that to take it a step further, I, I think we have a lot of experience sitting at the table. That we set up a time to go with Colorado and visit five classrooms for this other concept.
You can, I, I, we've offered that since last spring. So you just need to let us know after school when you wanna go and we'll arrange it.
And also the high school ceilings are, are not the same as some of our other buildings, we have a lot of space.
So we're gonna physically get a ladder, flashlights, measuring tapes, and we're gonna look at the floor plan and. I, I just suggested on the last meeting that we have a subcommittee of three people, so it's not a quorum. And we take two shots at going there with Colorado after school.
But you have, we have to release it, like, we have to.
Dr. Carver, I absolutely understand, you don't have to say it anymore, I, we get, I, I. Absolutely get it, we, we've been told that a lot of times. We're gonna do it, we're gonna move as fast as we can. So who's gonna, who's gonna do this with John? I'm gonna ask Corvett. Corvett? You? Okay, so. All right, so you wanna do, you wanna.
You can't do more than.
Okay.
And you cannot do five people, it's a.
No, I know, it's not gonna be five people.
Three, three, oh, I thought you said, I thought you also knew.
I'm gonna give you attention, you're not listening.
I am.
Yeah.
Trying to find your priorities.
I said three people, so it wouldn't be a quorum.
There's your priorities, it's right in the document.
Okay, when is some Bob back?
Bob is back on Monday.
So do you guys think you can organize this for next week?
Yeah.
And it might be, it might only be John and not Craig, but John did like the design anyways.
Yeah, okay.
John's a Bethel resident, he has his own system.
Hey, can you also ask John on the, you know, talking a little bit about the energy rebates or have you. Make sure that, it, it seemed like they were very light as far as their answers in. Making sure like a lot of the, uh, there's some, there were some simple devices that, that could get added on, that would help the entire.
So, so the scope of this project originally did not include any upgrades to the lighting systems, which is what John was mentioning last time.
No, it's not upgraded to the lighting, just.
You were talking about some type of automation, you were just tying the lights in with the automation control.
No, you probably have lighting sensors already in your classroom, you can. All you do is take that lighting sensor and they add what's called a relay pack to that sensor. Sensor's probably seventy-five dollars. And what they do is they take a set of those contacts and they run it to the energy management system. So that when the building is occupied, if there's nobody in the room, you're at lunch, you're at recess, in the winter you go down two degrees. In the summer you go up two degrees. What that does is, he, that was another disappointing thing about the energy, so. My other question that's gonna come up is, we wanna see a sequence of what they're doing for automation. Because what that does is, that one little piece, he, he was talking about just doing a single sheet. That's easy, that's, that's, I call that the homeowner machine. What you wanna do is you wanna do a comprehensive energy project, we did it at the police station, we did it at Johnson, we did it at Barry. We did, we did it at every school, this, this, and this would be a perfect candidate, cause this is a mechanical renovation. This is not really cosmetic, it's all mechanical. And, and who could help you with this is ESC, they have a energy group, there's other people that do it.
Yes. Then another thing I would wanna know, if we add that to the scope of the project, would the state, would that be eligible for reimbursement? I would assume so.
Absolutely.
I would assume it would be.
No, it is, it is, we do it all the time, it is.
Well, John, you don't apply for school construction grants to do it. And the question I have is, if, if we had, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, so don't misinterpret my, my question. I'm not saying that, but my question is, because they were very, very specific in all of the meetings I attended about the grant and that. We were the same thing. The only thing they're gonna reimburse is the actual installation of the systems.
Right.
They did not say.
No controls?
Well, we have controls.
Right.
So.
They already have controls, but they're not, so we're not adding that to the scope of this project. My que- my question would be, is would that be reimbursable? If we're gonna put it into the budget, um, to do that, I don't know if it would be, we just would have to find out if it's, if it's voted out. Cause they're very, very, very specific about what would be reimbursed and what wouldn't be reimbursed.
So is, would that be considered controls, which is not gonna be reimbursable? That's a good question to ask.
It's the mechanical systems. Applications to address, um, you know, areas where there's no mechanical system for heating ventilation air conditioning. Think that these programs don't have it, they also allow applications for limited mechanical capability for heating ventilation air conditioning. Or other improvements in air quality, which are actually kind of discouraged with the blow is very never getting a break.
Yeah, and.
Or did.
And they give examples, like I think I used this Friday, like if you had a cutting of the ceiling, they would cut it to where the vent is. They would reimburse that, but they wouldn't reimburse the replacement of like areas around that. I'm not saying that they wouldn't, I'm just saying that, I don't think it's a bad idea, but if we're putting into the scope of the project, I'm not sure it's reimbursable.
So can I give you an example? So somebody that, somebody puts the energy project together, right? They take your automation system, that's why we wanna see what, what's in the project already, right? And they say, well, if we add, this, this is a sidebar now with the utility, this is with ever source. Not from, not, you're not getting the money from the state.
But you have to pay out.
So the energy people, before you even do anything, whoever does the energy engineering for you says, okay, we're gonna charge you. I'm making up a number, we're gonna charge you eighty-five hundred dollars to assemble a comprehensive energy project for you. They're gonna take that energy engineering, they're gonna give it to the utility. The utility's gonna say, okay, it's gonna take you a hundred thousand to do that. But you're gonna save on your utility cost, on your gas and electric, and we're gonna give you forty-eight thousand if you do it. So the, the scope of what they have on automation is important for us to see for you. So that some of that stuff right now, they including, and, and CO2 control is one of them. Demand-based ventilation is another, these are canned things that are already in your units that you're buying, that you could get money from the utility. So it's, it's like a two-part thing and it's not really complicated at all.
But I agree, it won't be, it won't be reimbursed by the state, but the utility will give you.
Right, but I don't think it matters for the purposes of the application of the brand.
Well, I, I think it matters only that we, if you're doing that with Colorado or, or whoever right now. So that the right equipment, a lot of times they even want extra sensor in the thing or whatever it might be. So that we get the right, the right units, cause then you won't get the rebate and a lot of times there's no extra cost.
Right.
Right, but I, I guess I'm more confused than I am. Cause that, so when we, we just had a conversation about moving forward with, we're gonna go through, look at the priority areas, which just popped up for you. And identify based on the designs as they are now. With SDV and Colorado to see if we can make any adjustments for the budget for the purposes of applying for the grant, correct?
And next week, there's gonna be a meeting.
And next week, as an aside.
Yeah.
You're just gonna, if we can, arrange it, you're gonna crawl a little bit through the high school. And then look to see if you can give them additional suggestions, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
So who's gonna be in touch with Colorado, you, you too, okay? And then you're gonna let, let, let everybody know just so that.
And I'll have Angela reach out to you tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
To Jen tomorrow morning.
But could you wait till Evan's?
And, you know, our process started, is I have no idea where we are contract wise between SDV.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and the down, and the Department of Education. Right.
Yeah.
And we're not worried about getting that ink or anything like that, you know, we'll, we'll have them sit down with Colorado tomorrow if that, if that works out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get along with it.
Yeah. And, and then any additional suggestions you can give to Colorado, which we'll include, right?
Right.
Just on the suggestion to Colorado, if they could reach out to ESC, I think that's who we'd want to have them do this energy audit now. So that, you, you know, even though it's not part of the project, it is part of the project.
Well, let's, let's ask Colorado what they, what they already done, so we're not.
It, it seemed like they were very, very light as far as what they've done, that was the impression.
If I get involved in official capacity, I could press them a little bit more.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe learn a little bit more.
So what I'd like to see, and I don't know how it has to happen to keep within the rules. But like tomorrow, there shouldn't be any reason why they can't just email us the scope of the automation. And I don't see, I don't.
And so do you have, it looks like you don't have the spec book there, so that spec book like it was about six hundred pages.
It is six hundred pages, it is six hundred pages.
It's literally six hundred pages.
So, so I think that that's where you, you'd find that, it's in the spec book, so.
Yeah. So wait, I, I wanna back it up, and I don't wanna be disrespectful here, but here's where, where I'm getting the feeling right. It's six hundred pages in the spec book, we gotta go find it.
But so.
No, no, no. What I'm asking is, and I said this, expressed this, is we're volunteers here. There's, can't be a reason why somebody can't email Colorado and say, send us the draft of the automation.
We have to pay for the services every time, John.
What's that?
We have to pay for the services. Services, they've already provided the information for us. And we ha- we, we, we had a contract for them to do that work, they needed that work.
So.
So John, what I, I could do for you is I could, I could open up that spec book, find the actual section based on the spec number. And send you just those probably ten pages or less.
Or tell them the pages and we can look it up there.
Yeah.
Do you give me permission to approach ESC?
No, the spec book's online.
ESC isn't, is, is it part of it? No, indeed, that's what he said at the meeting, that they wrote the spec for the control. So if they wrote the spec for the controls, then it's in there. It's a proprietary system, the only two people that could work on it is S, SNE or EIC.
And he's willing to get the pages for you, I guess why would I give you permission?
Why do you need permission?
Can I get permission to go to Stanford? Sure.
Come on. Come to the third floor of the government center, I'm on the west wing. Come on, no, you, you don't understand, we talked about this at the last meeting and we said, please let me finish. We said that, he said himself, I said, if we ask you for something, rather than us dig it, could we approach you? And his exact words would say, go through Jen, cause I don't wanna get five emails. Those are your exact words.
But you have the information.
Where? Where do I have it?
I, it has been sent to you numerous times.
In the shared drive.
Showed you where it is.
Okay.
You have the information.
I have, I have the file you gave me with six hundred pages, that it took me seven telephone calls to get it unlocked. So that I could print the plans last time, I'm not going through that again. So I don't. Not talking about last time, okay, we're talking about right now, right now, plans.
Did he not, I believe that part, it didn't.
Yeah, but that's not six hundred, so it's not, it's not there, but it's on the shared drive. Evan is gonna let you know what pages to look at, so you can look at that part, if that's what you wanna do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we'll proceed with SDV and Colorado.
Yes, and, and getting together for a meeting.
Right, as we need time, we'll work on the other things that we talked about in terms of.
And whoever said you, you. And Corvett hopefully can show up and we can look at the spaces that you want to look at. Do you wanna be a part of that too?
Uh, it all depends on how we work out our time.
Okay.
I mean, hey, if we build in time for something like that, if you think it's useful, absolutely.
But right now, anything that's coming out right now, just, just to be clear, all the cost estimates and stuff, we have to pay out of our budget.
Right.
It's not coming out of the project.
Right.
And we don't have unlimited resources to be able to do all.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
So.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody have any? Who's gonna hang on to these?
Or you can give them back to Jen and she can keep them in the office, so if anybody wanted them.
Oh.
Okay.
Right next to my heart. Very close to my heart. So, so the next meeting, we're gonna have more steps completed and.
Well, I think as long as we have that general direction.
Yes.
We'll work on the cost estimates. And, and it might not be the next meeting, it might be a couple of meetings, it depends on how long it takes them to shoot the work that they have to do.
Right, but we're moving forward, yes, cause you, you've gotta keep working towards getting a grant in sooner rather than. But make it complete with all your.
Was that, was that, was there some Johnson Rockwell?
Yeah.
Does it have to use?
Probably not.
Okay, I did email the state today just to ask when we were cleaning up everything.
So let's, hang on a second, if we're, if we're done with the HVAC, we'll move on to Johnson and Rockwell. Okay, so Johnson and Rockwell, do you have?
Well, just, just little thing.
Any audit, any, anything?
Well, I emailed today, the project's definitely closed out.
Yeah.
I emailed the, the Office of School Construction today to ask what the status of the audit was and they. and they they referred me to D A S um to do, so I haven't heard back from them.
Okay.
But either way, that that process probably wouldn't involve you guys at all.
Oh.
So I think we're, I think it could be six months, if it'd be a year.
Yeah, I think we still have to sort of, we can have it on our Q until you get your final reimbursement payment.
Yeah, well, it's actually the town, I guess.
Yes, yeah, yes.
So that that's kind of permanent, because uh we did go over uh on Rockwell School while monitoring the level spreader on our fee this summer, um so.
That was outside the project.
No, that's inside.
It's still inside the projects.
It's inside the project?
But not with the reimbursement, yes.
But it's outside the, um, it's outside the Office of.
Reversing.
Correct.
That was never included with the Office of School and Production.
Yeah.
Okay, so well, our fee is still lumped in under that.
But you must have given, SDV gave us a final invoice,
Yes.
because we couldn't have, we could have not submitted for the state
Yeah.
unless you gave us a final invoice.
Carol, Carol did that, yes.
Okay, so.
So that would have to be worked out with a committee.
So our C O R, potential C O R that we wanted to move, that we talked about adding additional time for the audit.
I thought that audit was being held out separate, and the level spreader was being held, might need to check on that.
Okay.
So you're gonna have to.
I think I missed an over one of the emails I sent.
Okay.
I I I that's that's what I'm saying, I'm sorry. I thought you said that it should be added on to that, so charge for the time that we had spent this summer on the level spreader, plus estimating any type of time we had to spend on the audit.
We shouldn't have to spend any time on the audit, or, and I did need to check with Carol on that, or did she put a little section in there that was a couple hours about the audit?
Uh, I would learn, we have all started.
Yeah.
No, I understand that, but if there's supposed to be this, you know, some part that SDV has to do with audit, then that's gotta get spelled out.
Yeah.
I don't think we would have.
No, I see, other than you and me putting boxes in the back room there.
Um, we we we've, we we closed out the high school a couple years ago, and I don't think, I think this, even though I don't like the, your system that that the Office of School Construction has now, they have most of the information that they would have typically come out and looked at physically. So I don't know that there's gonna be a lot of work for the audit.
Yeah.
Okay, so that that makes my.
So put, yeah, put something together if there's, if there's a change order to deal with, we'll do it the next meeting.
Yeah.
So and so then, on the on the level spreader, um, did did David go out and look at everything?
David did go out and look at everything, he was fine with it, however, Darren from S L R, on returning to his office, comparing his pictures to the plans and specifications, realized that the large you know, three and a half foot, lots of pipe that's coming out of the detection bottom, according to the plans, is supposed to be buried under no less than a gauge, so they're and mounted to prevent any freezing that might happen during the winter.
Thanks.
So he
Good night.
uh was in contact with Sunburst, letting him do that for the contract documents. Um, and once Pete sends pictures of that, he'll extend the order of substantial provision. Pete said he's really busy trying to wrap up two projects, and he'll get to it, but we might end them off.
Okay.
So we still have that five percent retainage, um, which I do not submit to us, meaning because I figure that's what's at work.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, so are they gonna, are they gonna have to bring materials in? So they're gonna do it on Saturday, or seven in the morning, or whatever, because they know they can't do it there. At least they have the gates in there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so then, once that's done, is she gonna be okay with those are, is they have to back up there?
No, no, Darren's fine with those.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so Pete was updated on that. Do you have one invoice, I guess?
Yes.
The perconceasement one? Which is basically all S L R, I don't even think perconceasement has anything in there. And this is not, this, you checked this to make sure we.
Yeah.
Because I have anything to compare it to.
Yeah, so the seven twenty-six is is what's new uh on.
From S L R?
From S L R.
Okay.
This next page here, where you have, there's an outstanding invoice, this is what we paid.
Last time, they just haven't received, or they hadn't received it, and they sent us out. Okay, and this, the perconceasement ones, for whatever reason, go to um Jen, Jen Carter, not to me, not to you, Jen, it was to me, and then I gotta send it to you. So I'll make a motion that we approve uh perconceasement invoice number zero zero six eight nine six two dot zero nine dot zero dash nine for Johnson, extended for the month of September, in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. Olson seconds, any questions? Probably have another one, maybe two from S L R.
Yeah, I mean, I I would hope that maybe an hour, again, room to write the letter of substantial completion, once he gets those photographs.
Yeah, so there might be another invoice from that, okay. And I think, well, we don't talk about that right now, since we, so any anything on this, all favor? I opposed, done, I think um perconceasement also doesn't really have any time that we need to spend on a lot. So we should, once we put all levels for the thing, we should cut that down.
Right, so I could put together the final budget for next.
Okay, for next time. Once we get all those things, good, great, that would be, we're gonna be asking, I'm sure, okay. All right, so, anything else on schools? Yep, okay, we'll move on to the training range. And I, all I can say. What's going on with the?
Uh, so um, John, you're lucky that your email has not been going through. Uh, you would have seen all the emails that we've been having with Action Target. Um uh, they are, um, they finally got us last night updated plans for the pad for the M A U, showing you reusing the existing pad as-is. And I went through the drawing and the specifications, according to my reading, everything said I A T I contractor. So I read that as Downs does not have anything that they would need to price or install to enable the delivery and install of the M A U and the associated equipment. I sent that in the email this morning, asking for confirmation from uh David Johnson at Action Target, and I've not heard back yet. I will, you know, continue having him to to get these answers. I'll also continue to, uh, last Friday, we were able to get the comments from the medical health department regarding the permit. And they were really fairly generic, um, so I'm not concerned about us being able to answer the questions. The only issue is that she will only accept the answers from Action Target, because they are the subject matter experts. And again, getting stuff from Action Target is taking a long time.
And send it to her, can you tell them what to say, and then have them send it?
So she, so as part of uh uh David's email, uh regarding the, you know, I I asked him six things or so, and he responded with uh that he had sent these specifications, or sorry, Rex, Johnson, Rex Shields in his office had sent this response.
But just to you.
But it wasn't it wasn't to me.
Oh.
And I, it, so he's he sent, he said, this is what Rex sent as a response previously, but I don't know who that went to, so I asked, did this go to Jen directly? Because it, because I wasn't C C'd on it, or I'm sorry, to Jen, to Laura.
Yeah.
Laura directly, because I wasn't C C'd on it.
Right, right, right.
And can you please make sure you copy me on everything?
Yeah, yeah.
That you, that you're corresponding.
They've been doing that frequently, whether they either reply to one person, or they reply to the wrong people.
Right, um, so it, so again, um, no response to that, so I don't know where that communication stands between the health department and Action Target. Trying to get answers out of both parties is kind of like pulling teeth as well. And uh as far as the enabling work that uh that Downs is doing, um Kevin is on the line, Kevin, I hope you didn't fall asleep during our our earlier conversation.
I was uh tentatively listening, uh it was very informative, um so an update on the fit-out work is, um, so the electrical roughing is ongoing, uh fire protection, so the sprinkler lines, um, that work is, I'd say, like seventy percent complete. We have coordination that needs to happen once um Action Target installs their ceiling baffles. Um that's kind of the 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 main work that we we have in place so far.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so um and they're just kind of doing stuff.
Right, a- and per the commission's request, uh I asked Action Target for a schedule of values to uh correspond to their request for payment. They sent back, say, that their invoice was their schedule of values, which says to me they don't know what a schedule of values is, so I sent them an email, which Nancy and John were included on, showing an example schedule of values, and what information we'd be looking for. And uh, you know, as of close of business today, I had not seen anything from him responding to that. Um, so they are standing by their invoice of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, plus uh that we would be last time, and the commission uh turned down payment on. So I submitted again, for their what they've, they've put in, and that's uh.
Was it October sixteen, name?
October sixth.
Sixth.
And they.
They leave the factory?
It it's in the yard in Connecticut.
Oh, good.
But not on our side, not.
No, no, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they had, we had requested them.
Yeah, right. And they are saying they will not deliver it onsite until they receive payment.
Even though it's not in the contract?
Right, they have no terms of payment in the contract.
For being held hostage.
Right.
Is it, is it? Kind of keep, it is keeping us from moving forward. They, the emails I remember basically were saying, first of all, the one that they sent, the numbers didn't jive.
Right, so they did, they did fix that, so that the numbers do jive between the line items.
And they're basically saying that the third payment, which is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, hundred and fifty-two dollars, um, is the third payment for manufacturing and pre-shipment, and the remaining ten percent, which is eighty-two thousand, thirty-eight dollars, is their installation fee.
And you said the equipment is in?
It's in Connecticut, yes.
So did, we have, we have a performance bond? We have no bond? I don't think so, not with Action Target, I don't believe we do. So they're not gonna drop the thing unless we, the the M A U, unless we pay them, but we're not gonna schedule having them drop it in place until they answer your question about the pad.
Well, it's more than that, though.
Oh, it is, yeah, but are they gonna hold off on answering your question about the pad, until we pay them?
I I mean I'd just be shooting themselves in the foot, yeah.
It it's, so so the the unit's here, but we we still have the problem of.
We're about to. Uh, they said it's in the pickyard, so I've gotten uh uncles from a yard in Prospect. So I'm, that's where my caller ID said it was for Prospect, okay? So I'm guessing that's where it is, but Performance uh Mechanical at Torrington is the one who's actually doing the install. So I.
It's not on the site, if it was on the site, it would be a whole different situation.
Right.
Then we have a physical piece of equipment that is sitting in the police lockup, that I could almost see myself saying, maybe we can work our way towards the goal, but when it's sitting on an unrelated property, we don't know if there's leens on it, we don't know, we have no idea
Yeah.
where where this thing is. I I'm totally uncomfortable.
He said in the crane yard, so, so where that is.
So here's. Unless we had some legal, you know, advice, that that writes it up such as that, I I.
So here, here's a, just a concept, is you tell Action Target, set the unit on, have the riggers set the unit on the pad behind the P D, and then we come up as a committee, once you do that, we'll give you X amount of dollars. You know, obviously, the 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 numbers they have here, is it okay if I look at this?
Yeah.
Um, so add, the numbers they have here to to leave eighty-two thousand, because unfortunately, yeah, yeah, you have to think that, it hasn't gone smooth that since we started, right?
It hasn't gone smooth at all.
So I say to myself, what's the realistic number to keep as retainage, if you gotta get somebody else to finish it, because you don't have a bond? Uh, because normally, if you, if you had a performance bond,
Right.
if they didn't, if they, just say you paid for the unit, and they said, guess what, we didn't make any money on the job, we're not gonna finish. It's happened more than you think, but then you call in their bond, and the bonding company finishes your job, right?
Right.
That's kind of, so there has to be a, uh.
So what what is that?
Payment terms that we agreed to.
There are none.
There were no terms of payment in the contract, Action Target. However, subsequent to the contract being signed, and them starting to send invoices, they sent us their standard terms of uh terms and conditions, again, not included in the contract that down at Bethel sent, signed, but that standard term of conditions states that upon delivery of equipment, they are entitled ninety percent of the project.
Delivery.
Right, I'm okay, delivery, put it on our site.
Yeah.
Were we on the site?
Yeah, but where, you're comfortable with the ninety percent, that that's only leaving ten percent.
I I'm still uncomfortable, but I'm I'm halfway comfortable with it.
Yeah.
And there's also, I'd like to see, you know, waivers of lean signed off, et cetera, you know, I'm the same thing.
What's the balance of the work, once the thing is set?
Eighty-two thousand, I think.
No, no, what is the scope of the work?
They won't, they won't.
That badge we requested is a schedule of value.
No, no, what I'm asking, because I'm. Is installing all the range equipment and the M A U, a lot of work.
That's what, that's, that's my question. All the work.
Yeah. We've paid them four hundred and ten thousand, ninety dollars, a hundred and ninety dollars. We owe them four hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and ninety dollars. So we've, they've, we've paid half, and we owe them half.
So is there a number that I could counteroffer that this committee would be comfortable with? If I came back and said, we were willing to pay you up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left on your contract value, two hundred thousand? I don't know, I'm making up numbers here, but is there something that I could counteroffer?
And I would tell you, I know that, I I'm already thinking in my head, the answer to that is yeah, unfortunately, at with the stage that we're in, we have to give it to somebody, and 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 maybe it's, maybe it's your firm, that says, okay, the unit's on the pad.
Right.
How much is it, what's the cost estimate to finish it?
What's, what's-
Here's the problem, though. The targets and everything, who are you going to get to finish it?
Right.
Only get Action Target.
Yeah, it's all, yeah, it's all proprietary.
Yeah.
So we couldn't, yeah, whatever, programming, all the electronic, we don't have.
Which is, if we had a schedule of values, we could call that out and say, here's the money we're going to give you.
But we, but we also don't have a pad that it fits on, is that correct?
So we do have, the, the equipment fits on the pad. And this redesign that they sent us, uh, last night, uh, about six o'clock, um, so that's why it was not included in the stuff that I distributed yesterday, shows supports, basically what I pitched to them, which is using concrete supports to support the branches of the ductwork that extend out past the pad for all the heavy equipment and to harness themselves to it on the pad.
Yeah, so it's basically ductwork-
So you got to-
-that has to have a support out here with an elbow, whatever. Instead of putting a huge padding.
If they could deliver the, the hardware that's in Prospect and it fit on the pad that we have.
Yes.
That was my, that was my concern, that we, I, I misunderstood what you meant to do.
Could we have them do that? And then we might pay them some more?
Yeah.
I think that's the reason-
Well, I don't think, I don't think you could pay them anything until the thing's onsite.
Exactly.
Because there was one email, I have to find it in my phone, where, I knew it was either Rex or David Johnson, and David Johnson said, the MAU is not worth X.
Right, I, I had put out a number, when I listed out the objections to the submitted invoice from last meeting.
Right.
I said, you know, these numbers were transposed, and one of the things was, the MAU is worth four hundred thousand dollars, um, and, and we don't have it onsite. And he came back and said, well, the MAU is actually only worth three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Really missing the point.
Yeah.
Clearly.
I don't know, it seems, seems that we're, we're at least in a reasonable position to ask them to put it on onsite. At least, I, I'd be comfortable going that route.
I think we have a, what a price I have to pay.
Eighty-two thousand, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm less concerned, you know, then at least we have the unit there, we'll build it, and we'll also, for, for the rest of the work. At least we got the, the unit sitting on the pad. We'll put other people on the job, and they'll have to put this stuff together, and that's the way it'll go.
But we want Action Target putting in the range equipment.
Absolutely, but by the same time, we got nothing now.
Right, right. Yep.
It's got to be on our property.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it just, it's simply got to be on our property.
Yeah.
And we have no valid argument for not paying the bill once it's here.
Correct.
Because we have no progress payment from.
Correct.
We didn't negotiate terms of payment.
Right.
Which is stupid.
So who would have thought that?
Pardon?
Who would have thought we would need to do that? Anyways, so-
Half a million dollars, and we don't have terms?
I know.
Well, they don't have terms either.
More than half a million dollars.
It works, we're the guys that have to pay the bills.
Yes.
So we're always on, understand what the terms are. And our, our folks obviously-
The problem is, though, is that we have a schedule that has to, you know, has to be met.
Where are you applying?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if they're holding up the project, then we're looking at a whole different, different circumstances.
So they want, how much down for a payment?
Uh, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand and-
Hundred and fifty-two dollars.
So if we offer them two hundred thousand dollars after they put it on the pad, would that be a fair number? If it's dropped on the pad, we give it two hundred thousand, right now.
And I believe it's, what, roughly two hundred to go?
No, it would be, it goes to another meeting.
So if Towneby gives us a schedule of values, we can pay him as he goes?
Yeah.
Because we're going to have the same conversation in about sixty days from now.
You give them two hundred, you're, you're right.
Is this actually-
You'll have two hundred in the offer. Right?
Well, you know, you're going to take this number, the duct two hundred, add eighty-two to one twenty-eight. Okay, yeah.
Or show us the schedule of values, and then we're based on those.
Yes.
No. Yeah, I say, set the unit.
Yeah.
Set the unit, and we'll set the unit, give us a schedule of values.
Right.
That's for example.
And we'll give you the two hundred.
Right, say that to him.
If you're not willing to prove that you stack from the spec three.
So we're giving the unit-
Four hundred in there.
Right, four thousand.
Yeah, deliver the unit, give us a schedule of values, and we'll give you two hundred, right now.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I am too.
Good, deliver it to-
So, yeah, so, so say-
It's got to be on the pad.
So, so say, he says, fantastic, I can get a crane here Friday. You don't have another meeting for two weeks.
We can call a special meeting.
Do you think that's fair with your experience?
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think if they drop the pad, and he gives me a schedule of values that says the, the unit itself is worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the installation is a hundred and ten thousand dollars of that, I would be fine with giving him the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the MAU actual cost. Because we now, like you said, Roy, we own it, it's on our site.
But, but don't we all, isn't there enough, more work to be done, setting up the targets and whatever else?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I'm ju- just talking about the NAU scope of the project. So, yeah, it was about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars was the total scope for the target range, target equipment and install. And then the other four hundred about was, were the MAU equipment and installation.
But we've already paid the first four hundred, though, right?
Yeah, we're ten.
And we have all, we have all the range equipment onsite, it's just not installed.
It's got to be installed and programmed and, like you said, proprietary, and so.
Right.
And all the work, the other associate, associated work, sprinkler system, electrical, is, that's-
That's what Downs is doing, yeah.
That's pretty much at, nearing completion.
Well, yeah, I mean, a- as Kevin said, you know, they, they, they reach a point where they need to stop and allow Action Target to catch up, so that the two can mesh.
Got you.
And I think the schedule of values should be on that order.
Okay, yeah.
And I've got the offer, but not for-
And taking into consideration. So, um, you got that, now we approve change order number one, which I have signatures on. And I have to file, copy the town clerk. You sent us change order proposal number three?
Number three, yes.
Where's number two?
Number two, again, came in from Kevin later yesterday after the window to get stuff up.
Okay.
Um-
So we're going to do, or we're-
Uh, we can, I, I had it, I, I had it, I just wasn't submitted before the meeting, so.
So, but you gave us three?
Yes.
Okay, so we can look at three?
Yes.
Anything else anybody needs? So we're good with what we're going to do with the MAU, you know, what was going on with that?
Yeah.
And-
And as always, I'm going to start off by calling them, at their, their office, open at eight A M. Utah time.
So you call them.
So I call them, and then I send an email, I copy you on, and I'm saying, this is just a reiteration of my, my voicemail. This is what I'm requesting, please call me back. And when I don't hear back, next day, I say request number two. Continue to bother them until-
And you'll continue to see if you can tell them about the building departments' requests and needs, but I- Because that's kind of holding back the parts of the permit.
Right.
And you can get moving on that. So the change order proposal, which is the, um, metals, miscellaneous metals. Did you argue back and forth with them about whether they were supposed to install that stuff or not? Because they had said yes, and then they said no.
Right.
So, right.
Right. So, um, yeah, and one of the reasons that we asked them was because, uh, Downs found that that was an expensive part of their, um, their, what, what they were getting for, for pricing. So we hoped we found, we would find a economy of scale by having Action Target do that unistrut, in addition to the unistrut that their mechanical install or has to install as well.
Because they also do it on other jobs.
Right.
So, um, how, where does this put us? So the change order is forty-three, does that include Downs' part? Yeah, forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-seven, ninety-four?
Yep.
And is that, where does that put us with quality?
That puts us with about ten thousand dollars left in contingency, and, uh, we saw them not touch Downs' contingency that they concluded in their change order, which is eight thousand dollars.
How much?
Eight thousand, three twelve.
Eighteen thousand.
So eighteen thousand are-
Yeah.
So I have a question, um, Kevin. So we've got change order proposal one that we approved. We're looking at this one tonight, at what point do you have to, don't you have to kind of put a couple of them together and?
Yes, um, uh, so for, uh, the month of October, I'll put together a GMP change order number one, which will include the, the one that we approved last week for the fire alarm, and if this one is approved, it'll be included.
Okay, because I'll have to also get that signed by the first selectman. So, another question. So the one I have that you sent out, Kevin, has no signatures on it.
Yeah, so I, I asked Mark Allen to, if he had any comments on it. I have not heard back, Kevin, did you get anything back from Mark?
No.
So, yeah, it, it's, so, yeah, it's going to be the same thing that happened with the last one. Um, we're going to have to, if we could agree to it as part of this commission, and then uh, J, AJ approves it and signs it, um, you know, we could have, uh, that then sent to you, or to, at his office, or however we want to do it.
I, so I'd rather have it go through me, I mean, you can send them a copy, but because the last one, um, I have Dan's signature on, and nobody else's, but then you sent all the electronic ones, then I got everybody. What's the usual, I, I always, the sequence that I'm accustomed to is the architect signs, the construction company signs, and then we, as the owner, sign the final one.
It, it, uh, it varies who has the final executing signature between the client and the contractor.
Right.
But yes, the architect is the first one that's on it.
Okay. So, e- e- even if we approve it tonight, it's going to need to get signed by both Kevin and, and Brian and/or Mark, whoever does, probably Brian, because Mark's name's not on that.
Yeah, he requested that Brian's name be on it.
And then you'll get it to me, and I'll have Dan sign it.
Excuse me, Evan, could you roll it down so I could read it? Thank you.
Yeah, this is all stuff that got sent out. I am going to make a, the motion so that we can keep discussing. So I will make a motion that we approve Downs Construction Company change order proposal number three for unistruts, for the Action Target baffles, miscellaneous metals, et cetera, in the amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. I need it seconded. Roy, second, so we can keep discussing. And there's, um, actually a couple extra pages to the backup.
Get them some contractors still.
Yeah. It seemed to make sense that Action Target would do all this, since it's part of really what they need to install, but it was not specifically-
This change order is forty-one thousand dollars?
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
It's forty-one for the Steel Tech, but then Downs, um-
I, I just-
Parts.
I, I find this disturbing, that something of a forty-one, forty-three thousand dollar change order at this stage in the project already is, is kind of disturbing.
So, we actually discussed this during the GMP process.
Yeah, we did.
That we, Downs told us that they were getting very high numbers attached to the rest of it.
Right.
And so we verbally asked Action Target to take over that scope of work, because we're hoping to give them a cognitive scale, because they're already installing some unistrut for the mechanical, uh, supports of the trunk line in the, in the range.
Yeah, and they do it all the time.
Right. And they agreed to do that. And then I asked them repeatedly, and apparently I asked one too many times, because then they just said, according to our contract documents, it's not part of our scope, we will not do that. So we were put under the gun. Uh, Downs went out to their low bidder from GMP process and tried to reconvert them in a number, and this is what we were able to get.
Is it similar in what, came back originally?
Uh, Kevin, I think it went up fifteen hundred, is that right?
Yeah, so we included some costs for engineering.
We're stuck, this thing, this is, it's, it's another, another bad slope with this police station project we're heading down.
I would, I would not put it that way, I mean, we have to do it.
I, I know we do, but it, it's just, we'll see what happens.
And they, and it's specifically excluded out of their contract? That's what holds their panels up?
Yeah.
It was not in their original pro, uh, contract, in Action Target's original contract. And it was part of the whole bid packaging that Downs put out. But as Evan said, there were several parts of the bidding that came back that were kind of ridiculous at the time. And which is kind of how we're, away stuck with change orders, but, you know, Evan's been doing the best he can as far as negotiating what's best for the town, which include getting Action Target involved, and they seem to be enthusiastic about it initially, and then they weren't. So.
You know, again, if we get to a point where we're over budget, I don't know who's going back to the town and ask for money, because it, it's not going to be pretty.
They're not going to go back to the town and ask for money.
So, so not, not fully understanding what that scope is, how does that compare to when they bid it?
Initially, he said it's fifteen hundred more than that.
So it's, so it's same-
Close, yeah.
Yeah. Same volume, it's the same number.
Yeah, yeah, it, yeah, from, from-
And Action Target never came back with a number.
Right. So the, all the times that they reassured me that, yes, they were asking their guys to do numbers, never saw anything of it, so I don't know, or, I, I just don't. Uh, yeah, we started that process in August. And we pulled it up Monday, Monday, maybe, you know, last week. So Downs was able to put that together, you know, quickly for us, so we can hopefully keep the project close to schedule.
This has to get going, right?
Right.
Right away.
Well, gotta pay, gotta pay it, so.
Who did the plans?
Yeah, did-
Chuck Hunskey, who-
But he, didn't he actually do the partition layout and everything for this?
Yes, yes. We had a whole discussion about it, because during sometime in the summer of July, um, Anthony was on saying that there, that people were coming back with, oh, you can't do that.
Yeah.
But-
I'm just concerned that-
And Brian got on and showed us that.
I don't want to end up with a change order when Action gets out there.
No.
He doesn't like something.
It's the plans that, after Action Target finished their plans, then Chuck Hunskey, who just finished their plans.
Okay, so we all buy in now.
And then we approve them.
Yeah.
And I sign.
Just double checking again, because I hate to have to change.
Well, like-
To change after we changed it.
We shouldn't have to. I wouldn't be surprised if we did, but I would be really pissed if we did it, so.
I'm never surprised anymore.
I know.
No.
And the notes?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Done. So Kevin, we're going to need signatures, and then, um, from Brian Humes, and then from you, and I'll get it to Dan Carter for his signature.
Okay, I can, uh, get that to, over to you tomorrow.
Yeah, and you can, um, I think you can just, with our approval, should be able to get going on that.
Yep, yep, I will, I'll talk to Steel Tech tomorrow and- Yep, yep, I will, I'll talk to Steel Tech tomorrow and cut them loose.
All right, good. What's this, or is there more stuff we have to?
Uh, well, it's the Downs' representation.
Yep. So this is Downs' application for payment number one. So this is a copy. Is it okay to, I usually get the stamped the sign, you have to finance.
It it again, it's it's really up to your town. And how, a lot of people are accepting electronic copies now.
I'll put it in and we'll see if they're okay with it.
Yeah.
So I I guess we were making results. Putting these, not not even the
So the backup.
Nothing with backup. So we were having some trouble. They made them, they was the originals, of course, they could bring them over, at least that's normal. All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve Downs' application for payment number one for the police station training range for the period ending September 30, 2023 in the amount of $39,614.18. This was sent out by Evan, all the backup stuff is was attached to what Evan sent out, so it's basically a couple of different contractors.
Second motion.
John seconds. Any other questions? Comments, issues? Done, all in favor? I oppose. And sign that one, put it in the piles that I have to. And then is that all, or is it? It's training range through August 25, did you do that at the last meeting or?
There's a question on that, I thought we said we paid that one, was it?
I thought that we were all to do.
Because basically, STV sends a paper copy and then they email a copy.
Yeah.
So sometimes a paper copy shows up. It's, um, do you have it in the minutes there or?
They, we approved one STV invoice for $2,924 dated August 18.
This was, this dated September 14. And it was in the folder that you left.
Yeah, I want to say that one came in like the day.
After the last meeting.
Or something like that.
And you don't get these.
I get emailed them.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah.
Because I get emailed them, you, me and somebody else gets emailed them.
Yeah.
And then they send this paper copy too and sometimes one shows up first, sometimes another one shows up.
I would, you said it was this 14?
Yeah, do you want it?
Yeah.
I assumed you had it because it was in the folder that Kathy left for me after the last meeting, but I wasn't here.
They don't work there anymore.
Well, thank you very much, you stay here.
But we didn't send it out, right?
No.
All right, so we'll be with the next one.
I'll, I'll, you know, might as well go in the morning.
That sounds true.
Anything else? It seems like, um, Downs is keep the, whatever the stuff they need to do with the training range and.
Downs is our our metronome here.
Yeah.
They're, yeah.
And have we gotten anything from Action Target on when their guys are gonna show up and do what Kevin is saying? They've got to stop some stuff so that Action Target can do. And then, and then Downs has more to do and then Action Target has more to do, it's like back and forth, Kevin, or?
Uh, I think that and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the order of operations is that Downs will need to collaborate with Action Target to do the sprinkler lighting while they're hanging the baffles.
Yeah, so like I said, all all the rough in for the electrical is complete, so they have their whips and they can't install their light fixtures until the baffles are in place because the light fixtures get mounted to the baffles. So the next sequence would be to get this unistrut installed. That way, Action Target can come out and start to hang their ceiling components.
That is okay.
But once you finish your, once you do that last part with the lighting and sprinklers, everything from ceiling down is all Action Target that they would wrap up on their own, correct?
That is correct, and we, that's inside the range here, we do have some ancillary stuff within the control room that's not really, you know, there's no, there's not much involving with Action Target at that point, most of the coordination with them is within the range itself.
So Action Target is using performance mechanical to install them, make a very. Did they give us, did Action Target give us a list of their contractors or?
Have you been having Evan need to do any more co-AC type meetings or are you just, it's you and Kevin making sure things are moving on?
Yeah, so I.
Because Action Target won't play.
Right, Action Target won't play. But I'm hoping that now that we have had this discussion, we can only get MAU unit landed based upon what we talked about this evening, that we can then resume collaboration part because that's Kevin is saying, they would, they need to start working.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Anything else from anybody else that we have to do? Kevin, I don't know if you've got anything you need from us?
No, not this time, just the, um, the building permit, I I heard some talk about it earlier, but you know, as it stands, I don't know if we haven't approved building permit yet, but uh, we have trades that are working without building permits, I've been pretty, um, you know, open with that, I just don't want to get to a point where, you know.
Yeah, so I I did approach.
Chris Parkland?
Yes. Uh, and he knows that you're working there. He's okay that you're working there. He is not willing to give a temporary or conditional permit or health department signs off.
We move at the speed of government.
But he's also not taking any exceptions to that, that Downs.
Yeah. I think it'd be fun, but I think we need to as much as we can with Action Target to do some kind of reply to Laura. Because she's, if they reply to you and you reply to her, she's not gonna play.
Yeah, and again, like, his response to me was that Rex had sent this, but I don't know who he sent it to.
Well, I mean, that that brings up the whole point of paying him.
Yeah, and Rex may have sent it.
Or he can't even respond.
So find out what he sent, who he sent it to.
Absolutely. Very concerned. Like, where do you, are you getting involved?
Absolutely.
I'm very concerned. This feedback is not good. We're at the start of making some immediate, immediate changes.
How was the, what was the resolution on having all this stuff delivered to the wrong area?
Uh, Kevin, dude, obviously you've been working in there, have they?
Yeah, I mean, we've, I I've tried my best to get David to respond, but we just, I took the proactive approach and we brought down a pallet jack and one of our laborers just moved stuff around to allow us to work. So that's kind of what we're doing at this point.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Basically, nothing so far seems to be very positive about this Action Target.
Well, they made the equipment, they put all the equipment together and they had it ready to go and.
They delivered to the wrong place.
Well, they.
They won't respond to a permit, they won't give a schedule of values.
Oh, yeah, I know. I know.
Not checking too many boxes.
Can I come over, show you a journey? I can do all the business.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, it's done.
Shut it down, Pat.